Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission regular meeting this September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you all for being here today. Before we begin, just for those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. And there's a certain protocol that we follow. We start out with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. And then we get into our agenda. But and before we do that, we have presentations. And tonight, we have four presentations. And I see we have some very lovely people from the community here to help participate in them. So looking forward to that. So as we begin, I would like to invite from the Bass Park Triptene Program, Kalke, uh, Kaklid Gordon, Otisha Hunter, Leila Flores, and Nia Fishley. If you could please join me at the podium as we do the Prep Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let us begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to explain what the TRIP program is at your school? Who would like to speak? Come on up here, tell us what that program is about.
Um, the TRIP program helps us with many opportunities, volunteer hours, having fun while we're young, many things. We enjoy it really much, very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a little gift for all of you. Call this a swag bag, and we're gonna take a picture. I'm gonna invite Commissioner Beasley Pittman to join us. Here you go. Little gift from us, alright?
Alright, can you guys face this way?
This way, yeah.
Yeah.
Come a little tighter, a little closer. Okay, very good.
Alright, right here, one, two, and three. Got it, thank you. One more point.
Great, thank you, thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. So having shared in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to invite everybody to please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. At this time, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Present.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Present.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Here.
We have a full attendance tonight, a couple of agenda announcements. CM thirteen, the city manager asked to remove that from the agenda, as well as CM fourteen. The applicant requests to remove from the agenda. We also have a change in CM nine. The cam was revised to correct the meeting date and the background section. Okay, if there are no questions or comments, would someone please move to
I move to accept.
To approve the agenda as amended, as well as the minutes.
I move to approve the agenda as amended, as well as the minutes.
May I have, I have one edit to the minutes?
Speak up now or forever hold your peace?
Okay, I will speak up, thank you. So on the minutes of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, that would be, um, let's see, page one. And that is the one thirty PM meeting. If you look at the last paragraph, there's a sort of a combination of two neighborhoods there in the acronym from District Two. It should just be SMRCA. It's South Middle River Civic Association. There's no T. I think that T is maybe from Middle River Terrace, but it should just be SMRCA when talking about that neighborhood.
Smirka.
Smirka.
Yeah.
This has an extra, uh, an extra letter in the acronym.
Smirtka.
That's it. So if we could just remove the T.
If it's okay, I move to accept the minutes as amended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second? Move to seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda as amended are now approved. So let us now begin with our presentations, and I'm very, very honored and honored to welcome the folks here from, from the People's Republic of, excuse me, the Republic of China. I'd like the folks to know that I had the opportunity a few years ago to visit Taiwan and, uh, and to visit our sister city there, Kaohsiung. And, uh, and very happy to now welcome our folks from Taiwan as I present this proclamation recognizing the hundred and thirteenth National Day of the Republic of China. And if I could please ask our Director General, Charles Cho, to please join me at the podium.
Are you always in such a good mood, or just because you're here in Fort Lauderdale? I like to think it's the second.
So from the office of the mayor, the city of Fort Lauderdale, this proclamation presented in recognition of the hundred and thirteenth National Day of the Republic of China, Taiwan. Whereas the Republic of China observes the hundred and thirteenth National Day on October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The Taipei Economic and Cultural Office, established in Miami in nineteen eighty-eight, has paved the way for strong ties between Taiwan and Florida, including numerous sister city relationships and a thirty-two-year sister state partnership. The United States and Taiwan have maintained and enhanced a close relationship and friendship over the decades, encompassing commercial, cultural, and other interactions based on the nineteen seventy-nine Taiwan Relations Act, the cornerstone of the United States and Republic of China, Taiwan, ties which celebrate its forty-fifth year of enactment in two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas Taiwan is the United States' eighth-largest trading partner, with two-way trade totaling a hundred and twenty-seven point five billion dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. Wow. Must be all those computer chips we're buying. As well as Florida's ninth-largest merchandise trade market in the Indo-Pacific region. And whereas in early two thousand and twenty-four, the United States House of Representatives and the Florida Legislature took significant steps to strengthen economic ties with Taiwan. These actions included passing legislation to streamline tax agreements and resolutions, supporting Taiwan's inclusion in the Comprehensive and Progressive Agreement for Trans-Pacific Partnership and the Indo-Pacific Economic Framework, and acknowledging the signing of the United States Taiwan Initiative on Twenty-First-Century Trade. Taiwan's valuable involvement in international organizations, including the International Civil Aviation Organization, the World Health Organization, the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, and the International Criminal Police Organization, would benefit a regional development, peace, and prosperity. And whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale supports Taiwan's aspirations to further contribute to international development and to promote peace and prosperity, and cherishes its sister city relationship with Kaohsiung City. Finally, the city of Fort Lauderdale recognizes Taiwan's efforts to participate meaningfully in global affairs and will continue to support its mission of economic liberalization, political democratization, and significant participation in the international arena. Now therefore, we as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale do hereby recognize October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as the Republic of China, Taiwan Day, here in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and recognize everyone to join us in congratulating the Republic of China, Taiwan, in this milestone and recognizing its achievements with admiration and appreciation, signed the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four, by myself, Mayor Dean Trent Talis. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and all honorable commissioners. I must say, today we are so, so happy to join all our friends to come to the commission meetings. Today is not only me, we also have leaders from our Taiwanese community.
Why don't you all come up?
Yeah, please come. And some of them come to this great city more than forty years. One of the founders, he, one of the leaders, actually is a founder for King of Fans. He also set up his office in this great city, city of Fort Lauderdale. Actually, the Taiwanese people, we highly, highly appreciate the city of Fort Lauderdale provide the wonderful opportunity to let us live here and let our business grow in this beautiful city. Just now, the mayor also mentioned that we, Taiwan and Florida, and city of Kaohsiung and the city of Florida, city of Fort Lauderdale, we are very close to each other. We are not only build the sister city relationship, the Taiwan and Florida, we also build up the sister state relationship in nineteen ninety-two. So both sides are build up very good relationship. This proclamation actually means a lot for us, because it's not only represent the close relationship between each other, but also show the continued friendship from this great city, city of Fort Lauderdale. In this proclamation, actually they point out several things. I also want to show our gratitude to all of you. First thing is that, for Taiwan side, as you know, Taiwan is good at the chips. We also promote economic cooperation with the United States. Maybe you also don't know is that even Taiwan economy doing well, and also we making the chips, my, uh, the semiconductor for the world. But Taiwan is not a member of the United Nations. So we also hope through your support, we can be part of the United Nations, because we think Taiwan can contribute. We can work together, make our world better. But currently, as you know, we have a big neighbor very close to my country.
Yeah, yeah.
But that, that country, they point, they say, oh, United Nations, the past a resolution in nineteen seventy-one, that resolution is twenty-seven fifty-eight. They say based upon that resolution, Taiwan cannot be part of the United Nations. He said only one country, China, People's Republic of China, can represent. But it's wrong, because according to that resolution, nothing related to Taiwan. Also, they didn't talking about the speakers of Taiwan. But here, I want to emphasize, if we can include in Taiwan, then we can join together to make our world better, for the well-being of the mankind. And just now, the mayor also mentioned that you have a very good sister city in the other side of the world, in the city. We sincerely hope next year, our mayor and honorable commissioner, vice mayor, can lead a delegation to visit your sister city in Asia, in Kaohsiung. Kaohsiung is my hometown. So we welcome our city, our sister city, can have a delegation to visit Taiwan. Here, I also want to report to you, city of Fort Lauderdale is a household name in Taiwan. Because when I was young, we have a baseball team to come to here to play baseball. Then what we call it, Big League World Series. They take place in Broward, in Fort Lauderdale here. It is our fortune place, because since nineteen seventies until nineteen ninety-two, we attending around twenty times, but we get the seventeen championship in this, in this city. So so honestly speaking, when the people watch the TV, and then they will see the, this beautiful city. So we hope, uh, in the near future, we can have a mayor to lead a delegation. Before I end my remark, actually, I have two things to report to you. The first thing, because today is a very special day for Taiwanese, because today we call it is the Moon Festival, or Meat Autumn Festival. Usually, we celebrate the today with our family and the friends. Today, we celebrate with all of you, because you are our best friends. For this day, we also will eat a very special thing. We call it Moon Cake. Today, I also bring the Moon Cake to present to present to all of you. Hopefully, it's enough. This is a Moon Cake. So they have a different flavor. They have a red, uh, white bean, and also green bean, make different kind of dessert. This one is very good with the tea. Later, I will present to the mayor.
Vice Mayor, could you please get the tea together for us?
But, but first, Mayor, I want to make sure those are not worth more than five dollars for us, we can't accept them. Okay, thank you very much, thank you. I don't want to violate any ethics rules here.
When I visited, uh, when I visited Kaohsiung, it was during the same festival period.
Oh.
And yes, and we, and we sampled the same Moon Cake, Moon?
Moon Cake.
Moon Cake, yeah. They were delicious, I remember.
The last thing is that, I also want to report to you, this year, in March, in November, we have a big Taiwanese association, we will come to this beautiful city. We call it the Taiwanese Chamber of Commerce of North, North America. The first time, once they set up in nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-six, is the first time to host their annual event in Southern Florida. And this time, they choose the city of Fort Lauderdale. So during that time, there are more than five hundred Taiwanese businessmen from whole world fly in to Fort Lauderdale. If I include in their family, there will be more than thousand Taiwanese people during that time, from November tenth to twelfth. I believe through that event, we can build up more close relationship with the city of Fort Lauderdale. Finally, once again, thank you, city of Fort Lauderdale, to give us this proclamation. It means a lot for us. We highly appreciate your friendship. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, and all of you.
Thank you so much. While we take a picture here.
Oh, yes. Can I get some of you to get on that side? Can I get two people over here?
Alright, I think we're good.
Yeah.
What's paparazzi?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, absolutely welcome. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, President.
Our next presentation, it's my honor to ask the Vice Mayor, Stephen Glassman, to present a proclamation recognizing September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. There are a number of people who, who I would love to invite to the podium. They are Lorena Callejas, Gina Molineras, Susana Tomayo, and Karen Rondon, and Hispanic Unity's president and CEO, Felipe Pinzon. Are you all here? Yes, you are. Oh, and Anthony Abate, I didn't see your name on the list, but there you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor to present this proclamation from the office of the mayor, city of Fort Lauderdale. This is a proclamation in recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas generations of immigrants from around the globe have relocated to the United States and have contributed to the unique character of our nation. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight, under President Lyndon Johnson, as Hispanic Heritage Week. In nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan expanded this period to cover an entire month, beginning on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale is honored to join the federal government and citizens throughout the country in recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Unity of Florida and Mesa de Mujeres Latam stand as beacons of empowerment and opportunity in South Florida, Hispanic Unity of South Florida, a pillar of the community since nineteen eighty-two, has assisted countless immigrants in their pursuit of the American dream through a wide range of programs and services. Their dedication to respect, dignity, and transparency sets a high standard for community organizations. And whereas Mesa de Mujeres Latam has emerged as a driving force for Hispanic women entrepreneurs, equipping them with the tools and confidence to transform their dreams into thriving businesses. Their Mujer Empresaria Integral program exemplifies the power of mentorship and community, fostering individual success and collective economic growth. Together, these organizations are making a profound difference in the lives of countless individuals, enriching the South Florida landscape with their dedication and vision. And whereas during Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the continuous efforts of the Hispanic community to achieve equality and success. Now therefore, we as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale do hereby recognize September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and pay tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively and enduringly impacted our nation, dated this, the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trent Talis.
Thank you.
I didn't forget. Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Pinzon will say a few words on behalf of everyone. Felicidades.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Aren't you happy you took high school Spanish?
I'm very happy. See, where are those teachers? Yes.
Yes.
City Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Fort Lauderdale residents, thank you so much. On, on, I'm honored, Anthony Abate, the board chair, and, and myself, we are very honored to accept this proclamation today on behalf of five hundred thousand clients we have served over the last forty-two years. And, and the job that we do every single day here in Broward County is to empower immigrants to become self-sufficient. And, and those immigrants and those Hispanics are the firefighters, they are the doctors, they are the nurses, they are the ones that actually serve the food and put food around the table. They are the ones that make the society, the city, a better place to live, and work, and play. So it's, it's an honor to be here with you today. I hope that you guys get to stop by Hispanic Unity one day and learn about the work we do and how we can work together. There is so much that we do in the city of Florida with you, Mayor, and, and everyone else. We're very honored. Las Mujeres de las Mesa Redondas, they do a great job. I do not want to speak on behalf, so I really want Karen to come over and, and say a few words, you know, for that organization. Thank you so much, on behalf of again, you know, of the five hundred thousand clients we have served over the last forty-two years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this recognition. Actually, we are, we are immigrants. We are the immigrants who made it, because we found a place to thrive. We found in Fort Lauderdale, a place that inspired us, that actually brought us together, because we, we all come from, from different places, and we, one day, we decided that this place was so beautiful, that we wanted people to know that they could thrive as well. So our program is about helping other business owners, small business owners who don't speak English yet, helping them with their entrepreneurial skills, so they can thrive in this community. And we have also managed to get several, almost a hundred scholarships for them to learn English as well. And at this point, we have helped over one hundred small businesses, all of them woman-owned. And, um, that is what we do, but we all do it, because we know we are in a safe environment. We are at a great place, and we know it's worth it. And we thank you so much. Thank you, and thank you all here, because we know that you appreciate us Hispanics. You know that we are resilient, you know that we're always happy, you know that we're always thankful, and you have received us in this city with such love. And we work with love because of you and because of the people that we believe in. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. In Fort Lauderdale, Indy, why don't you come on up with people in your group? Anybody else? No? Okay. We like to think that Fort Lauderdale is known for its diversity, and that it's a place for everybody here in our community, so we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Welcome home, guys. Do they want it in translation? Okay, very good. Thank you, folks. Now it's my honor to, uh, ask Commissioner Beasley Pittman to present a proclamation declaring September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale, Find the Good Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner Beasley Pittman? Come on, ladies. The commissioner needs company.
I love all this red, ladies. Beautiful. It was beautiful. Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor that I'm able to present this proclamation this evening, from the office of the mayor of the city of Fort Lauderdale, in recognition of the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale, Find the Good Day. Whereas the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale Incorporated, founded in nineteen thirty-seven, is an organization of women committed to promoting volunteerism, developing women's potential, and improving the community through effective action and leadership. Whereas over the past eighty-seven years, the members of the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale has dedicated millions of volunteer hours to improving the lives of our neighbors and actively contributing to numerous, excuse me, numerous initiatives that positively impact the residents of the city of Fort Lauderdale and Broward County. Whereas the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale is a part of the Association of the Junior League International Incorporated, with over one hundred and twenty-five thousand women and two hundred and ninety-eight leagues worldwide. It is one of the largest and most effective volunteer organizations globally. And whereas the local impact of the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale has been invaluable with significant contribution to human services, arts, science, culture, and history. And whereas since nineteen forty-two, the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale has founded over twelve impactful legacy projects in Fort Lauderdale and Broward County, including Jack and Jill Children's Center, the Nova Southeastern University Art Museum, the Museum of Discovery and Science, and the Flight Center. And whereas on Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the league will join in celebrating Find the Good Day, dedicated to recognizing and celebrating community positives and uplifting others through kindness and compassion. And whereas the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale continues to play a pivotal role in advocating for significant community initiatives and empowering individuals to make a lasting impact. Now therefore, we ask the city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to hereby proclaim September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Find the Good Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale. This is dated the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four. Mayor Dean Trent Talis.
Alrighty. I'll hold it for you, ladies. Thank you. Feel free to say something.
Yeah, yes.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for having us here, on behalf of the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale. I'm deeply honored to accept this
I'm deeply honored to accept this proclamation for our work in the community and Find the Good Day. I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for this recognition, and as you can see, we're all here saying thank you. Since 1937, the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale has been a beacon of service and community impact. Of our current legacy projects, as you all heard, we're proud that nine of them are in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and we have at least one legacy project in each city district, so District 1, 2, and 3. We also have legacy projects in our Broward County, in other Broward County cities, namely Wilton Mansions, Lateral Lakes, and Coconut Creek. On September 19th, we are joining almost 300 other leagues around the country to celebrate Find the Good Day. We're excited to volunteer at Hope South Florida and the SOS Village. Our commitment to community service is unwavering, and we're actively exploring a new impact project that will help our community. We look forward to forging a strong partnership with city leadership to advance our shared goals. Additionally, we're pleased to hear the recent proclamation of declaring September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in Fort Lauderdale. Addressing food insecurity aligns with our current focus, and we're eager to support this initiative. We're deeply grateful for this proclamation and the opportunity it represents. We look forward to a positive outcome of future collaboration, and we're very excited at the possibilities ahead. Thank you for your support, and thank you for joining us in making a difference in Fort Lauderdale.
Congratulations, and thank you for all the good work that you do in our community. Thank you, ladies, again, and thank you for all the good work you do for our community. It's now my honor to recognize Commissioner Sturman to present a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Tower Club in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Is Mark Giarantano here, general manager of the Tower Club? Mark and everybody, come on down.
Mark, Roman, Amanda, Joey, Jeffrey, Milano, Dawn Number 1, Dawn Number 2, and Kelly. Do I have them all? Oh, before I begin, I am looking forward to the day... Junior League, before you leave, I'm looking forward to the day when you have a legacy project in District Number 4, too. Come on up, everybody. Well, thank you so much. Well, thank you so much. This is exciting. I want to read the proclamation from the city of Fort Lauderdale. In recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Tower Club of Fort Lauderdale... Wow, 50 years, man. Whereas, the Tower Club of Fort Lauderdale has been a distinguished institution in the heart of our city for 50 years, fostering a legacy of excellence, networking, and community engagement since its founding in 1974. And whereas, the Tower Club has served as a premier venue where business, civic, and community leaders have gathered to exchange ideas, build relationships, and collaborate on initiatives that have shaped the economic and cultural landscape of Fort Lauderdale. And whereas, the Tower Club's iconic presence on the 28th floor of the region's bank building has offered its members and guests the panoramic view of Fort Lauderdale's evolving skyway, waterways, and the vibrant community it represents. And whereas, the Tower Club has been a beacon of social and professional networking, providing an environment where personal and professional growth flourish while also supporting charitable causes and community-driven efforts to better the lives of Fort Lauderdale residents. And whereas, for 50 years, the Tower Club has stood as a symbol of unity, bringing together individuals from diverse industries and backgrounds to collaborate, celebrate, and to continue the ongoing success and growth of Fort Lauderdale. And whereas, the Tower Club has played a pivotal role in promoting Fort Lauderdale's status as a dynamic, world-class city by supporting its members' endeavors to drive innovation, economic development, and cultural enrichment. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale takes great pride in recognizing institutions that embody the spirit of community, excellence, and leadership, and the Tower Club has exemplified these values for half a century. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024, as Tower Club Fort Lauderdale Day, signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean Trent Tallas. Thank you.
It didn't load.
Take your time.
But I got it. Well, I'll just go off cuff. Don't worry, I can do this. So I don't know if you all know this, but Tower Club Fort Lauderdale is one of the last clubs in South Florida. So we had invited clubs, I don't know if you all know this, but we had the Bankers Club in Miami, the Bankers Club in West Palm Beach, but the one club that has stayed strong for 50 years is Tower Club Fort Lauderdale. And I want to say thank you to our citizens, our citizens, the great city of Fort Lauderdale. And, you know, one thing we have, what we say at our club is, for our members, we build relationships and enrich lives. And I'm sure you guys are all asking, well, how do you do that, right? Well, I'll tell you how we do that. So how we do that is we find great members. Kelly DeRoche does that for us by finding some great citizens in our city to come join our amazing membership. And with that membership, we also do some amazing programming, community events, really unique events. Roman Foster does that, has an amazing calendar. And to pair those amazing events, we also add some great food, which everybody does love some food, all created by our chef, Manolo Asine.
Did you bring any samples with you?
I didn't bring any cakes, which I wish I did. We're also having a Latin awareness, a month dinner tomorrow if anybody wants to join. And then, we host some amazing both social and business events that Dawn already does, specifically with our members and our guests. And lastly, the one thing that I can't forget, our 11-year employee is really the glue that holds us together. Dawn Woods is truly our glue that holds us together. So I want to say thank you to our members that are behind us, and thank you to this beautiful city for this proclamation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think the key to your success is that you continue to reinvent yourself and redefine who you are. It's okay. It's on the record. Thank you, folks, and continue to provide the great service that you have for this city for so many years. I think you're successful because you keep reinventing yourself, and I think it's a great amenity that the city has, and of course, the great food that we always get to enjoy at the Tower Club. So thank you all for being here today. Before we begin our official meeting with the agenda, I'd like to make a few announcements regarding September 2024 retirements. We have a few people who have retired this month or will be retiring this month. Mike Pafford from Public Works, 17 and 1/2 years. John Doherty with the Department of Sustainable Development has been with us for 11 years. Edward Kales, paramedic firefighter, has been with us 25 years. Darnell Matthew, also a paramedic firefighter, has been with us 21 and 1/2 years. Corey Callier, who's a facilities manager with Parks and Recreation, has been with us 23 years. And David Bailey, a senior accounting clerk with Parks and Rec, has also been with us 23 years. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. Okay. At this point, I would ask each member of the commission to look at the consent agenda and to see whether or not there are any consent agenda items they would like to pull. The reason for that is because we vote on the consent agenda items all at once, and if there's an item on the consent agenda that a member of the commission wishes to pull and vote on separately, this would be the time for them to do it. If there's someone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent agenda item and the item has not been pulled, I would invite you to step forward. I have your request to speak, and at that time, we will, at the beginning, we will invite you to so, step up and make your comments. So may I start with Commissioner Herbst? Do you have any consent agenda items you wish to pull?
So for the first time in almost two years, the answer is yes. I'm going to pull CM1.
CM1? And Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
None tonight.
None? And I have none. Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor's?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman?
For the first time in two years, I have none.
Okay, so CM1 has been pulled, and Andrew Shine? Where are you, Andrew? You're just here for questions on that? Okay, very good. All right, so except for CM1, do I hear motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Still moved.
Been moved? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tallas?
Yes, and all the consent agenda items have now been approved, so if you came here for one of those items, your item has been approved and we appreciate your being here tonight. Moving on to CM1, Commissioner Herbst.
Thank you, Mayor. So this has been an issue for my residents up at the Galt now for quite a while. After last year, we brought up the idea of trying to rearrange the route so it's less impactful on the residents up there. They've been completely blocked in for hours with inability to get to and from their apartments off the Barrier Island. Fred Nesbit's here and I think he could explain it in a lot more detail and a lot more eloquently than I can. So Fred, if you'd come on up and just share your thoughts about this event.
I'm Fred Nesbit, I'm speaking as president of the Galt Mile Community Association. For years, we've had marathons in our neighborhood and we've always promised it won't hurt the neighborhood. Last February, we had a horrible situation where the marathon was supposed to go from nine o'clock till four o'clock, I'm sorry, from seven o'clock to nine o'clock, it ended up going from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM. People on the east side of A1A, the Galt Mile, were locked in. They absolutely could not get out. Our only escape is the ocean and I can't swim, so I was in trouble. As a matter of fact, someone had to take their, it was raining, had to take their daughter from 3,500 Gold Ocean Drive to 3,900 Gold Ocean Drive, it took an hour. Now, I sent to the mayor, I sent to our city commissioner, I sent to the manager and the chief of police pictures and videos showing how we were locked in. And we said, you know, we could not tolerate this. Our people could not get off the Galt. Workers such as security, housekeeping, maintenance could not get onto the Galt. When you come across Oakland Park Bridge, you have to turn right, there's no other way to go, which puts you right down into the middle of the marathon. And when you look at it, you know, we're talking about 1,500 participants. So the, we have about almost 4,000, 5,000 apartments on the east side of A1A and we have about 3,000, 2,000 apartments on the west side of A1A. Plus, we have businesses there and we have hotels and they were simply locked in. Now, we were promised, after the email went out, that they would meet with the organizers, they would work on a solution, they would come back to us, something that would not lock down the Galt. As of tonight, no one has ever come back to us with a solution or an idea. So now we have another marathon that will simply go right through, cut the Galt Mile in half and will simply lock us down. And we know that there's probably going to be at least two or three more marathons this year or early next year.
So-
So, we're not anti-marathon, believe me. But we are anti-being locked down where we simply can't move. People can't get off the Galt, they can't get on the Galt. I mean, it was, and last year, it was, or this year, I'm sorry, this February, I mean, it was total, total gridlock.
So Fred, when you started your comments, what was the original scheduled timeframe that they had applied for? What was it that you said they were supposed to operate under?
The advisory we got from the police department, if you can find it here, a second.
Okay, take your time.
Yeah, I got it here somewhere. The advisory we got from the police department said that the marathon would last between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Actually, it started at 6:00 AM, we were blocked out at 6:00 AM and never finished till 1:00 PM.
Okay.
That means there were some slow runners.[329.12][329.12](Laughter) Obviously. And I, you know, I appreciate the problem the police department had because if they stop the marathon and let the cars out, they're going to get criticism. And if they don't stop the marathon and keep the cars locked in, they're going to get criticism.
Well, I think-
It's a difficult situation.
I think the first mistake was thinking that the entire event could take place within two hours. And so that was, that was a misrepresentation. It clearly would take a lot more than two hours for that to happen. So it sounds to me like it was more, I know you're not against marathons, the question is a properly planned marathon is what's at issue here. Because we have the same issue further down the beach and down towards, you know, the hotels and so forth, we have the same situation. We've never advocated closing down an entire road for any event, so I don't know how that happened where you were completely blocked.
But you had to remember, the Galt, you know, you've got a divider in the middle, A1A-
Right, right.
So they use one lane-
Right, okay.
-north, which means the other, you can't cross over at all.
Right.
And because there were so many runners, I think they spilled over into the other lanes and they were coming back the other way. So it was a very difficult situation. And we said, you know, they should develop a route that basically stays south of Oakland Park Boulevard.
So you're here tonight not to speak against the marathon, but to speak against the way the marathon has been planned and managed. And do you have any particular solutions or you're just saying, let's not approve this tonight until you, your organization receives a plan that's going to work for the community?
Yeah. I'm asking you not to approve it tonight, let them go back to the drawing board, come back with a proposal that we can live with, you know, and you know, we've got a big city. I mean, you know, I often wonder, why don't we, why don't we run the marathon like on Third Avenue or Andrews Avenue, right down in the heart of our business district on a Sunday? You know, think about the Boston Marathon, it runs through the main heart of the city.
So Commissioner Herbst, do you want to defer this right now?
I think that would probably be the best approach. Again, as Fred said, there are reasons that we don't want to necessarily shut down the marathon, obviously, you know, having people out, engaging in recreation, you know, it's a healthful activity, it brings people to the beach, which is always a good thing, but we can't do this in a way that impacts the people who live here, you know, year round and are snowbirds that are coming down for the winter. It's important that we be mindful and respectful of the neighborhoods whenever we're doing this because a lot of the folks that are going to be coming in to run this event are not going to be from Fort Lauderdale. So there's the people coming into the community that are impacting the residents of the community and it's great to have them come, but it doesn't promote a whole lot of business activity. You know, I used to, I used to volunteer for Beaches Fine Art Series and we would put on three of these mini triathlons every year. And the folks that would come, would come from all over the state to participate in our events. And they'd come, they'd do the event and then they'd leave. It's not adding to the economic vitality of the area. It does introduce people to the area, which at the end of the day is a good thing, but you know, we're not seeing, we're not seeing an economic boost, we're not getting value to the neighborhood when people are running through the neighborhood. So I think it's important that we do this in the least impactful way possible and if we can defer this and allow the event organizers to sit down with Fred and come up with something that's acceptable to the Galt, then you know, I think that would probably be the best approach.
And when you look at it, a very short segment of the marathon goes into the Galt. I mean, it's down here and then it goes up to the Galt, it starts at Oakland Park Boulevard and goes up to North 40th Street and back down. And that's just enough to simply tear us apart.
Okay. Carl, do you want to add your comments to this?
Because I also had a comment that I wanted to make to Carl as well. Was this the same marathon, Fred, that you had the trouble with last February, this 13.1 Fort Laurel Half Marathon and A1A 10K? Is this the same exact marathon event? I know we have different marathons, different lengths.
No, it's a different marathon.
It's a different.
But again, it cuts, uses the same path.
Okay.
At least from the Galt, from Oakland Park Boulevard north, it uses the same path.
Okay. Carl?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. So the event organizer is here tonight and can speak to this, but we have kind of worked with some associations and some of our team to kind of find a variety of different paths forward and we can certainly get with you and kind of work through that, but we do have some options available other than this option.
So why don't we, why don't you see if you can work through those options and meet with the Galt Ocean Association and Mr. Nesbit and the promoter? Because the city certainly encourages, you know, outdoor activities such as this, I think it's a great branding opportunity for the city and why don't we just defer this item tonight?
Okay, very good. Do we need to do that by motion?
Do we have to vote on that?
Do we have to vote on it? All right, do you want to move to defer, John?
Yes, Mayor, move to defer.
All right, second.
Mayor, can we discuss something now that we have that motion?
Well, you didn't sign up to speak, that's why I didn't ask you, but come on up.
Lots of events the event organizers usually have a question for us.
Well, you usually have, it's okay, come on up, come on up. It's not our usual protocol, but come on up.
He's running in there?
He's good.
So we, this race has actually never touched the Galt. This is the 13.1 half and to address your concern, I totally understand your concern. It's very valid. That, for this reason, we've never put this half marathon on the Galt. We've actually always turned around at 26th for this race. However, this year, we wanted to go back to our original course that we started.
So how can he tell us that it has impeded travel on the Galt and you're saying it never went to the Galt?
Right, that's why I want to address, I think, I think there's a little confusion with the marathon in February and this. So this event, in the new proposed course this year, one of the proposed options, we worked with Captain Jenkins to address the concern that was brought up in February to him and he brought that to us and we were proposing the new course. So what we wanted to do is go up to A1A, we're going to go past Oakland to 40th, but we're merging into the median lane, so when people come out of the southbound part of the Galt, they can make a right and get out easily. The whole northbound part is open, so there is no impact to those residents on that Galt Mile at all. And, yeah, we're not going in the Galt at all. And we'd be happy to go over it with you to make sure whatever you need to do, Captain Jenkins has already, you know, talked to us that there is an issue and we're happy to work with you. Like, and it's a totally separate event than the one that is in February. This has been around 18 years and in those 18 years for this event, we've never had any complaints or anything, we're out of there, we're off that north end of the course before 10 o'clock and the race is over by 10.
So are we, we're obviously talking about two different events. So I'll tell you what, why don't, allow us to defer this to our next meeting so at least there's some clarification here and there's some comfort level that Mr. Nesbit and his association can achieve. And we're not going to, there's no real intention to deny it, but I think there needs to be some clarification as to the route and to the hours and as to the impact. I think that's only fair to them and if you don't mind, we'll just take it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as, you know, we can work together.
There's obviously some, obviously some miscommunication here, so, all right, thank you.
And I'm sure, Mayor, that Carl will work really hard to make sure that like the rest of the events on this agenda, they'll all be put back into District Two, so we'll have every single event on the beach possible. Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah.[819.94][819.94](Laughter) Yeah, I'm sure, I look forward to that as well. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please call the roll. Motion to defer this item to the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now deferred. Okay, moving on to M1, motion to consider the approval or denial of an outdoor event agreement with the request for music exemptions with the Heartbeat Foundation Corp. for the 15th edition of the annual Brazilian festival. No one has signed up to speak, would someone like to move the item?
Some of-
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
And this is for approval?
This is for approval, yes.
Thank you.
For approval.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
So before I vote on this one, I just want to comment. So when this had come around last time, there was a suggestion that we were going to waive fees, so I'm glad that staff brought this back acknowledging that we're not waiving any of our fees and that the event promoter is actually going to pay the amount that's due from the last year's event that we haven't gotten the funding from. And I also see that they've made a contingent on that partial payment being received, there's a payment plan. So I just, I just want to let everybody know that it's imperative that when we have events that come in our city, that whoever the promoters are, has to pay whatever fees are due and owed to the city before we consider ever doing a second event with them. We just can't have people not pay fees and think that's acceptable. So now that this has been amended, yes.
Well, all right, so let's, in all fairness to the promoter, what the issue was, was paying for parking, parking fees. And there was a contractual amount that they would pay for the use of parking so that they could have parking for the festival participants. And during, and during their festival weekend, it rained out completely and they had no customers. So the question was, should they be required to pay for parking for a parking lot that was not occupied? And did the, would the city have earned any income during that same day if it, if the city alone had use of that parking lot? And since it rained all day, there was some consideration that was being entertained as to waiving that one day since it rained out completely. So I don't think they were trying to skip out on anything, I just think that they were seeking some sort of equity because they felt that they couldn't use the parking lot because it rained all day. But the city wouldn't have used it either, so the city wouldn't have been out anything. But I applaud the organizers for at least agreeing with the city to pay it and I don't think you're looking to skip out on anything. I don't want there to be any aspersions cast on their integrity or their goodwill, so, but anyway.
It's not casting aspersions, Mayor. It's when, when we have any promoter come to town, whether it's this particular event or if it's Tortuga or anybody else, promoters take a risk, they make a profit, okay? That's the nature of capitalism. You take risks, you make profit. Some days, you don't make profit, the weather doesn't cooperate, the city is not responsible for the weather. Just like we don't share in the profits, if they, if their event is wildly successful, we're not going to share in the losses if the event doesn't go off its plan. So I, this is not about this promoter, this is about making sure that we send this message to everybody that wants to come and use our facilities and agrees to certain conditions as, as part of that and then understanding that that obligation must be met. Whether they're successful or not, the onus does not come back on the city to make sure that the event is profitable. So I just want to make sure that that message gets out because I don't want to set a precedent for anybody else that may have an event that doesn't live up to expectations, that's all. This is not casting aspersions on this particular event promoter or anybody else.
Isn't this all a moot point because everyone's agreed to the payment plan?
Yeah.
We have to have the first payment by the end of this month and nothing goes forward. So I think it's all great, so can we just vote?
Okay, let's proceed with the roll.
I already did.
Great.
And Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and so that item passes, thank you. M2, motion rejecting all bids for Mills Pond Park improvements. This is about bathrooms again on Mills Pond Park. We can't seem to get bathrooms on Mills Pond Park. I don't understand why, but let's go through the process and let's just get things going. So I hear a motion rejecting all bids for Mills Pond Park improvements?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M2, motion rejecting all bids is approved. M3, motion approving an agreement for the George T. Lomire Wastewater Treatment Plant Generators Phase One, a Phase One project with Solaris Electrical Services. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Now, this is just the installation of the generators, not the purchase, correct? Susan, I think that's it.
If Alan can confirm, I think it's the installation, was it also, not the, it's not the generators, is it just the installation?
Alan Dodd, Public Works Director, this is the installation, the generators and the switchgear and associated electrical work for those. We've already purchased the generators and the components because of the long lead times.
Okay.
Where I should have stayed an electrical engineer. If you were, okay, thank you, thank you, Alan.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M3 is now approved, moving on to resolutions, appointment of board and committee members. Will the clerk please call the names to the record?
Yes, for the October 1st, 2024 resolution for the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Linda Fleishman nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Carlton Smith nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Nuisance Abatement Board, Avigdor Pemper nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. For tonight's resolution, Audit Advisory Board, Stephen Emery nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Budget Advisor Board, Melissa Milroy nominated by Mayor Trentalis, William Brown nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, John Rochester III nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Ross Camerata nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Carl Burklehammer nominated by Commissioner Sturman, Charter Revision Board, Richard Weiss nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Marine Advisory Board, Norman Beckoff nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, James Harrison nominated by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, Nuisance Abatement Board, Chris Smith nominated by Commissioner Sturman, Parks, Recreation and Beaches Board, Alex Colazo nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Rochelle Coatsy nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Erica Mohan, and that's a consensus designated the Chair of the Broward County's Public Art and Design Committee. And we received one additional name, if we could add it to the resolution tonight for the Community Appearance Board, Vida Moss nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And that rounds it out, aside from, we're still looking for takers for the Large Users Wastewater Advisory Board Commission appointment.
Okay, are there any other-
That's a good.[1325.15][1325.15](Laughter)
Are there any modifications or additions?
Mayor, I have a point of information that was brought up at my district agenda meeting last night for District Two, if I might just ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Thank you. So this was brought up at my meeting last night with the district urging that all of these appointees and especially all of the other board appointees and committees and task forces, we're going to be passing an ordinance tonight about a code of conduct for boards and committees and task forces. Then they each have to sign, I think, an affidavit corresponding to that ordinance we're going to pass. It was brought up to me last night that some of our boards won't be meeting for a while, some are meeting tomorrow, and they were wondering how quickly that affidavit will be distributed to these folks to actually sign and when that would go into effect.
I mean, we can get them out fairly quick, just depends on how quickly we'll get them back.
Okay, is there a deadline on how long it takes to return those affidavits? Basically saying that folks will abide by that ordinance and what that ordinance states?
Well, the ordinance will be effective, in effect tonight.
Oh, it will go into effect tonight? Okay, but then, so whether or not actually anyone signs the affidavit, that ordinance still goes into effect? Okay, so folks that brought that up at my meeting last night, that's the answer, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, there being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
And as amended.
As amended, yep.
Thank you. A resolution that the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board committees as set forth in the exhibit attached here to have made a part here. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and, and those individuals are now appointed to the board and committees and I want to thank all of them for their committing themselves and their volunteer time to helping the city move forward. Thank you. Moving on to OFR1, this is an ordinance of first reading, this is an ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida enacting a new subsection of the city's Code of Ordinances regarding unauthorized public camping and public sleeping. Mr. Ansbro, do you want to present the ordinance?
This is an ordinance based on the state law, Section 1365. It's the city's response to that statute, so that will be in effect on October 1, on the second reading, which the second reading will be on October 1, this is the commission meeting, it'll be in effect that night. It's the same ordinance you have seen on many occasions. There will be a couple glitched things fixed by the next meeting that we've come across. After discussing it with the county, they had a couple ideas that I think are well taken and we will do that, but again, this law is different from most and then it will be in effect 24 hours a day. It will be for daylight as well as nighttime. The state law addresses nighttime camping and sleeping, but ours will be in effect for daytime as well. It will not affect public parks or beaches because those places, especially at night, are prohibited from having anybody on them or in them after-
Sundown.
Nighttime hours, yeah, sundown.
Okay, anyone have any questions of Mr. Ansbro regarding this? Okay, we have several people who've signed up to speak. I'll call your names three at a time so you can be prepared to speak. Start with Sister Robin Merrill, followed by Vanessa Ferguson, followed by Ramona Noguera. Good evening. Could you push the button at the bottom of the speaker?
Thank you, got it. And of course, my glasses just broke, so excuse me. I'm greatly concerned about this ordinance. First of all, I agree with it on the basis of I'm a big proponent of pedestrian rights, so I do not think that people should be sleeping and camping on the sidewalks and in public places. However, as we could see in reading this, the only alternatives the city is giving is hospital, shelter or jail, and that's just not humane. Mayor Dean, you did mention jail repeatedly at the candidate's forum and audience members were in disbelief when they heard it. I do have a question regarding the economic impact statement, the estimate says that the regulatory costs are 1.5 million. And my question for that is that, is that coming out of the homeless budget? Is that for one year? It doesn't say how long that estimate is for. I believe that we should be using that money on wraparound services instead if this, because I believe that the county and Sheriff Tony has said that they're not going to arrest people for this homeless law. So if the Fort Lauderdale Police is with these funds of this 1.5 million that's suggested, where does that put us? I mean, are we using our homeless budget money to pay for the Fort Lauderdale Police to then turn around and enforce the rules and potentially arrest them? I do not feel that we should be overriding the ERs and the hospitals, absolutely. Shelters, we don't have the space. If we did, a lot of those folks might have chosen to be there, but obviously there are people with a lot of issues which are listed there, the issues of mental illness or other issues. But if we jail them, one of the big problems is they will then have something on their record and that does not help the homeless whatsoever. So I don't know if you want to answer my questions while I'm at the podium regarding the funding or if you want me to step away?
No, you can stay there. Tom, do you want to respond to that?
I don't have an answer on the funding. I don't know if there's somebody here, whether Chris-
Yeah, and my belief is, it is the, okay, mostly the homeless outreach team, which is the six police officers that are dedicated to that and those come out of the general fund. And then we brought over two administrative positions to deal with 1365 and we've talked about that before as far as the complaint intake, follow-up and response to those. So it's a combination of those administrative and some park rangers as well.
Okay.
To follow up on her other question, jailing is an absolute last resort for a person who will not listen to the officer to move along. will not listen to the officer to move along. If that person has mental issues or they're impaired some other way, the officers may not be able to judge that, but if they are resistant, they can be subject to arrest, and that's not what the city wants to do. As we've said repeatedly, no one wants to arrest their way out of jail. No one wants to treat homelessness as a jailable offense. It's for people not listening, and when basically they're trespassing, when they're told to move on, when you violate a trespass order, this will, that's what this will be, it's tantamount to that, then they would be presented for incarceration. Hopefully, very, very rarely will it have to be used.
I think it's important that we, the people, know about that, because this is coming up in just a couple weeks. So I, I, I feel that this is really a knee-jerk response to something we've known about for a long time. We could have done a lot better with that money as far as putting it to better use, employing perhaps people who can help with the wraparound services, but to have a police officer walk up to folks that are encamped on the, on the sidewalks, and to just offer them those ultimatums. And I think we need to know, and not just have our, our poor journalists try to figure it out, but I, I think that the city needs to let the people know the exact measured response, perhaps week by week.
The, the city intends to get, have three different outreach meetings, and it's also meeting, giving documents to the homeless population that it can reach to explain to them in very simple English what this will mean. We are under an order, basically from the legislature of the state of Florida, all cities, all throughout Florida, all counties, and we are trying to do our best to cope with it.
Thank you.
But before you leave?
Yes.
I wanted, because you addressed one of your questions to me, so.
Yes, yes, yes.
So as Mr. Ansboro has indicated, the idea of, of putting a homeless person in jail is, is the measure of last resort. And even if that happens, it's been my request that we, first of all, the intent is not to criminalize a person for encamping on a sidewalk, even though it becomes a criminal offense by state statute. So my goal is to use the jail facility not as a jail per se to incarcerate, but to get people off the street, out of the weather, and to create a safe space for them, separate from the other inmates, so that there is a safe space within the jail facility in order to accommodate people who have no place else to go. And the idea is to use that opportunity to do case management with them, to bring in healthcare workers, to bring in addiction treatment folks, to bring in mental illness folks, to be able to work with the homeless folk that, that are now brought into the facility, to, and to ensure that they are, they are actually participating in the recovery efforts that we feel will help them to try to get themselves out of their homeless situation. So it's not to criminalize them, it's not to, to give them a criminal record. The idea is to find a safe space off the streets. We had often thought that maybe the, the stockade that the county once was thinking that they could use it as an overflow site for their, for their criminal population. We've now discovered that that facility is uninhabitable for anybody, so it's not, it's not an option. Until the county is prepared to either rehabilitate that site or completely rebuild the site, it's, it's really not an option anymore.
Okay.
So what other options do we have? And, and it's, yes, it is a knee-jerk reaction, but it's not our knee-jerk reaction, it's the legislature's knee-jerk reaction for putting together a statute with not, not thinking it through, putting a mandate on the cities without any funding whatsoever, and expecting the cities to find a way out of this. This is not a city of Fort Lauderdale problem, it's not just a Broward County problem, it's a nationwide problem.
Correct.
And we're trying to do what we can. We only have so many options to us. Again, I've always been a homeless advocate, you know that, and I've been, I've never tried to criminalize homelessness, and this is, nor is this an attempt to criminalize homelessness. So a person, the way I envision it, if a person wants to, if a person refuses to participate with the options that they're given, including refusing to, to move from a public space after an officer asks them to do so, then this should be a safe space for them, to be able to take them out of the elements, the rain, the heat, and all of that, and to try to, to work with them, to try to get them to the social services that I just described in order to help them out of their situation for homelessness. That's my concept. It's been completely distorted by people, it's been completely misunderstood by people, but some people find that they get some sort of political advantage by trying to exaggerate the things that I've said, but so that you hear it from me tonight, that's exactly what I had intended, and so let's hope that we can try to manage the situation in Fort Lauderdale as best we can. We have a staff here that has worked endless hours to try to figure our way through this. We have Chris Cooper now, who's the head of the team that we have here in our city. First time in the history of the city that we have ever had a homeless director doing specific work just to try to work our way through this situation. So I'm very proud of this commission and the city manager for appointing that person, and hopefully we'll be able to get through this.
Will there be an arrest warrant for the person that you're mentioning goes into that space?
We haven't even worked through that yet.
Okay.
We haven't gone there yet.
And is the county in agreement, the sheriff's office in agreement with you putting people in the county?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. We have a lot of things to work out.
So what's the concept of a plan?
It's the concept of a plan.
Got it.
We've got to have a concept.
One little thing, if I could add?
Yes, go ahead.
I wish you would be here this afternoon. We had a very robust discussion about, you know, long-term shelters, midterm, what we're going to do, and, and then, short-term, and once again, I know we, over and over again, city manager, we've discussed this several times, as an alternative, we don't want to, I mean, arresting people for homelessness is not our business, we, it's not a crime. So one of the plans that, that we spoke about this afternoon is the emergency contractor that we have, Ashford, is looking to set up a very small, maybe twenty-bed or something site, that just as people have to come off the street, just to hold them until they go to community court. Not jail, but, and it's not a shelter, we're going to be there forever, but an alternative to bringing them to jail, because that's not what we want to do. Just someplace for a couple days, and if you just want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I mean, what we're looking at it is as overnight respite, because we know that there are not enough shelter beds in Broward County.
Correct.
So that we would stand something up that would allow them to have a place to go, so if they are sleeping in a public space, they, we'd be able to offer them that, again, as overnight respite.
But you know, we need a lot more than twenty.
Understood.
This is, this is, no, as we're going, building more shelter beds, and we discussed this afternoon.
Okay.
Way to really ramp up the shelter beds in general. Look at, look at the clip from this afternoon, it'll give a lot of information.
Okay, I will, thank you.
I've come, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And, and just to say, it's a work in progress, that, you know, one of the things we talked about, it won't be perfect from the get-go, but we will learn and refine as we go along.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Vanessa, followed by Ramona.
Good evening. I believe that homelessness should be tackled at its root with compassion and practical solutions that restore dignity and stability. A lot of the speech that I prepared earlier talked about the criminalization, but you guys like just spoke about that and cleared some of it up. I do believe that we need comprehensive housing for solutions, programs that do provide stable housing along with mental health support, job training, and healthcare. So, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Ramona, followed by Ebony Crispin, followed by Bill Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ramona Noguera Wash, oh, good evening, everyone. I'm Ramona Noguera Washington, nurse practitioner with A H F, and I'm happy to be here to express what's going on, because I take it to heart about homelessness. Homelessness is something that's only going to increase as the rent prices are so high here in South Florida, like in New York, they're, they're comparable to New York and California, and it's all, it's a cycle. If you don't have a job, which I know of too many people, or if you have a job and the job is not paying that much, you cannot afford even to rent nor to buy. So I feel like if we, we need more jobs so that we'll have less homeless or houselessness, and it's, it's a big problem. It's, it's contributing to all the viruses that we have right, have now, the dengue, the, because of the close proximity of people. So if we don't get to the root of the problem with trying to create more jobs, we're going to have more chronic illnesses, viruses, diseases, less people, more people living on the street because they have nowhere else to go, more suicide, and we know that it's emotional, and people are not taking it to heart enough. We have to make, this is very, very serious. It's not something that we just discuss today and say, let's sweep it under the rug. We've got to create jobs. And there's all these abandoned buildings all over South Florida. People could be living in there, and it would be less money than building up new and trying to get as high as possible. That, that's all I have to say.
Well, let me just help you out here. Fort Lauderdale has generated thirty-six hundred new jobs in the last year, and, which is a phenomenal number, never before achieved there. And unemployment rate is below three percent. So it's, it's a very tight job market. You're absolutely correct that housing is super expensive here in Fort Lauderdale, and the city of Fort Lauderdale continues to partner with private investors to build affordable, affordable housing. We, we, we're partnering with Mount Olive Baptist Church, we're partnering with the Food Pantry, we're partnering with many, many different organizations who are looking to build affordable housing. We were complimented by the mayor of Broward County for the amount of affordable housing projects that Fort Lauderdale has built in the last five years, and she says, unlike any other city in the, in the county. Is it enough? No. Can we do better? Yes. So we're doing our best to try to get to that point where we can find housing for everybody.
Excuse me, I have contact with people every single day from, from all types of careers, quality, life, what, I see them in the clinics. And the jobs, I'll give you a personal example.
Uh huh.
They advertised all over the news that they were hiring school bus drivers for Broward County. I know people personally who went, and I called Human Resources of, of Broward County School Board, there's not enough school bus drivers, and it's just disorganized, they're not calling people back, they're interviewing them on the spot saying, we're hiring. And the people, so yeah, there's jobs, a whole lot of jobs, but the people aren't getting them. And I know too many people who are living in their cars.
Yeah, and.
Personally.
Unfortunately, that is the case.
If they have a car.
In some situations. I don't know what the county is doing with regard to their, you know, their public transportation network, but, you know, that's just to give you a measure of, of the city of Fort Lauderdale doing its best to try to work towards trying to solve that problem. And, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ebony Crispin, followed by Bill Brown. Bill, are you still here? Oh, you're there.
Hi, Commissioner Ebony Crispin with A H F. You actually answered a lot of the questions when Sister Robin came up as well. Thank you so much. I am curious, two things. One, there are nonprofits, Broward Houses here, for example, that while they, obviously we don't have, they don't have units all the time to be able to provide responses quickly. I know there are organizations that are available. To be able to support some of the community meetings that you spoke about a few moments ago, is there an opportunity for us to go back to the drawing board, and by us, I mean the community, so that we can work with the city in order to find solutions that won't even have the criminal, the word criminal as a part of the ordinance? While I understand there needs to be a space for people to go, my concern is that you may not have control over how people are entering this process, what it means when they get there, what happens to their items when they inevitably have to leave it behind. I'm concerned about what that means for the individual person. And the second thing is, because so many of the folks are suffering through so many different issues, whether it be mental health, hard earned their luck, lost a job or two, it, a number of things, is there an opportunity for us to also go back to the drawing board when it comes to how we're viewing not just the problem as, as if it's an entity, but the person, and whether something like social work and using some of the one point five million dollars that was indicated, to be able to hire folks that can have a bit of a hand-holding process into a better solution than putting them in prison, in jail, in a space where you're going to hold them for a period of time?
Okay. Tom, do you want to explain a little bit?
I do want to explain something that people don't understand. If someone is charged with a municipal ordinance violation, it is not a crime, it's not criminal, it's what's called a municipal ordinance violation. So it's not criminal, you don't get a record for a criminal violation or a criminal conviction. The intent is, if people have to be detained for this and arrested, we were hoping to get them quickly into what's called our community court system, where they have the opportunity to work with a community court judge to get them identity, to get them social services, to get them a place to stay if they can, but they will be given that opportunity as quickly as possible. No one wants any one of these people to languish in jail for any, with the shortest period of time, so they're turned around and brought into community court.
I don't doubt that.
But don't think, don't think it's a crime, because it is not a criminal offense.
All righty.
Another thing, Chris is working with a lot of faith-based organizations. Want to wave, Chris? Chris, you can think about. And one of the things you address, for instance, safe storage, I mean, that's something we're aggressively pursuing, I know people that have belongings, what to do with them. So a lot of, a lot of the things that you address, we are looking at as a commission, so I'm, I'm proud of the fact that we are working together on a solution with this. Thank you for.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill Brown, followed by Chris Brennan. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Can you sign up with the clerk? Where, where is the clerk? On the front, please. Yes, Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members Commission, Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. Thank you for the opportunity to come for you. This, as we all know, and you've all discussed, this is, is a big issue. It's not a Central Beach, Barrier Island, Galt problem, it's in each and every one of your commission districts. You've taken criticism for not doing anything, but you know what? You have been doing things, all of you, you know? In the last two budget cycles, you've, you've increased the police homeless unit, you, you passed panhandling ordinances to try to help the homeless, you've put funding in for community courts. Tonight, this ordinance is just another tool in the toolbox to help and solve the homeless problem. So to be criticized and to have staff be criticized for not doing anything by this community is not right. And I want to commend this commission and staff for taking the, the initiative and, and trying to address it, because there's not one solution to all this, as you said earlier, Mayor. It's, it's, you know, it's a big elephant, and we're, we're taking little bites at a time, and it's a lot easier reaching into a toolbox and having a tool to use to help something that is cracking eggs to make an omelet. So I commend you for that and ask for your support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Brennan?
Good evening, guys. Thank you for having me.
Good evening.
Well, I wanted to address this, you guys have really set my mind at ease with what you've said so far, so thank you for that. I'll, I'll read what I wrote, but there's, there's a little derelict here. The, the unauthorized camping ordinance, while I agree with it, should be given more time and thought. I remember, Dean, you and I met back in twenty fourteen, when Jack Seiler was going to enforce the homeless feeding ban, which was written kind of quickly and architically, and it, and more or less said, no public storage of property or sharing of food, which meant that you and I couldn't sit on a park bench, and I couldn't offer you a bite of my sandwich, because it was so vaguely written. So I would just say, handle this as delicately as possible, put as much thought into this as possible, so that you don't end up on the Daily Show with Jon Stewart making fun of you like Jack did. And, you know, it's, so far, so good, but let's just be really careful, work with the homeless outreach programs as much as possible, which you seem to be doing. And basically, I'm just here, it's a cautionary tale, we saw what happened to Jack Seiler, and I don't want to see that happen to any of you. So thanks for taking the time to hear me.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming by. Trevor Everglade, Trevor, from Save?
Thank you for having me. I'm an organizer for Save LGBT, and I've done a lot of work in partnership with AIDS Healthcare Foundation, and we've done a lot of work for marginalized communities to advocate for low-income housing. And one of the issues that comes to mind is for the people in the LGBT population, they might not be able to participate in using a jail cell as a homeless shelter, especially for trans folk. I just want to bring to mind that, especially for trans folk, depending on their gender, they may not be even able to utilize that jail cell properly. But I really want to bring a question today to mind. What will the city do in the event, when the homeless shelters are full, the hospital stays are exhausted, and a cycle of homelessness and incarceration ensues?
Good questions, we don't have an answer for that yet.
Okay.
Right now, our current facilities are full, are being managed at maximum capacity, and that's why we have the problem. So now we have to find additional capacity, and we're searching for ways, we're trying to work with the community and other governments to try to expand capacity. That's what, we already have that problem. So we're doing our best to see how we can shore up that, that problem.
Thank you for. Thank you for tackling this problem in many different angles.
All right. Thank you for coming by today. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, there being nobody else? Hold on a second. Do I have to close public hearing, correct? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
No, it's not. You don't have to close.
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, so I don't have to do it.
No, you don't have to do that.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida enacting a new section 16 dash 32 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida prohibiting unauthorized public camping or public sleeping, providing for correction of scrivenor's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that ordinance is approved on first reading. Now we move into the ordinances on second reading. OSR one, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida enacting a new subsection 2 dash 29 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing a Code of Conduct for the city commission. We have a number of people who've signed up to speak. Mr. Brennan, again, you want to speak on this? Sister Robin Merrill, are you still here? There you are. Okay. Sister Robin Merrill followed by, that's it, just the two of you.
Well, I just want to say on this Code of Conduct ordinance, I don't think at this point it's ready to be passed. Code of Conduct's not worth passing as the conduct extends well beyond the walls of the commission chambers for you guys. And it needs to include campaign finance and donations, assuring easy public access so we know where the money comes from. You know, this will benefit the commission as much as it'll benefit the public because, you know, true transparency avoids wild accusations that you've been bought by developers. And I, I watch social media and that's either like the number one talking point and you guys just take a beating on that. So I think if we put a little more detail into this ordinance, then it might be worth passing, but as it stands, it's meh.
Well, it's a step, it's a step in the right direction.
It's a step in the right direction, yes. But I just, if it included a little more transparency, I'd be a lot more comfortable seeing it passed.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
I agree with that, that I do not think this should be approved tonight. I think it needs to go back for revisions, that it's not just a step, that it does need very sound revisions. Number one, there's no punitive action. Okay? You get like a slap on the wrist, you get a reprimand. That is not enough based on the conduct that has been exhibited so far by certain members on the commission. It doesn't allow for a commission member to be removed, whereas on your next ordinance regarding the commission members and the board members, they would be removed. Also, the, I want you to take a look at the amount of votes that it talks about in there. With the elected officials, it needs a four fifths vote, which would be a unanimous decision, right? Because the one member obviously couldn't vote. Whereas with a board member that is decided to be in conflict of the conduct, it's only three fourths vote. It makes it easier. I mean, these should, these should be the same. And the idea of personal attacks, that is completely a matter of opinion, very, very subjective. And now this is a code of conduct, but not a code of ethics. Please, this should be a code of ethics. Ethics is not even mentioned in here. And for us, many of us in the community, the ethics involves where money is being received. So an incumbent, someone who's already elected and is receiving money from developers and lobbyists, this is a huge breach of ethics. This code of conduct doesn't have anything to do with that. And that's why I do not think this should be voted on and approved today because it has everything to do with this year. It's an election year. So until it gets taken back to the drawing board and talks about transparency of where money's coming in from, so that the, the general public could actually see and know, and they don't have to go on a deep dive like an investigative journalist to figure out where money's coming in from, I don't think that this should be approved. And that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. We did discuss this afternoon about ordinances and charter amendments regarding campaign contributions and things like that. So we already have it on our radar to discuss, but I think we decided we wanted to put it out to the community, to let the community participate in that conversation. And it's not just for the commission to decide, it's for really the community to decide. So, anyone else wish to speak on this item? From us, the community, or this community? Say it again? I mean, anybody else, meaning us or the community? With regard to what? You said, does anybody else want to speak on this item? I meant, there, I'll get to us in a minute. Anyone else wish to speak on this item from the community? Okay, nobody else? Commissioner? Yeah, just to address a couple of things there. Number one, you, we spoke about this at great length about, you know, any punitive consequences. And us as commissioners, we simply do not have the power. We, I mean, we can't remove anybody from office, we can't suspend them, we can't, I mean, this is, it, it doesn't have anything legally that we are allowed to do. If you, I mean, Tom, if you want to comment on that.
That's correct. You do not have the power to suspend one of your members, nor to bar them from participating basically to, for forfeiture of office. People should know that there is a longstanding county ethics code that applies to you in all kinds of aspects. In addition, chapter 112 is full of ethics code matters that apply to local officials. So this is not an ethics code. It's a, basically, it's a decorum code. It's cobbled together from about 15 different other cities who have done this. And we've given you the most power you can give yourselves to monitor your conduct among yourselves.
And she did bring up one other thing. I just want to throw it out there while we're, I mean, it's supposed to a four to one, a three to two vote, a majority vote. I mean, is, do we even mention? Did we even mention, discuss that when we, we brought this forward?
You did. That's why it says forfeits would have to find to either censure or to reprimand.
Oh, so it's not just a majority? Is that what we? Well, it's, it's basically a unanimous vote if it. Right, the person's going to recuse themselves, so it's four. Unless you wanted it three to one, did we, did we agree to? I don't remember doing it a four oh. I mean, I have, I think it's appropriate, but you, do you have a different opinion? No, I mean, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm just raising the question that is, is, I don't know how I feel about that. I'm curious how my colleagues might think. Anyone else have any thoughts on that? I guess not. No one else has any thoughts on it? All right? Okay.
Correct, it is, it is a majority vote.
It's a majority vote for.
For the commission.
For the commission?
For anybody who violates the code of conduct, except inconsistent with the city charter.
Well, they're talking about OSR two with regard to city boards or committees.
You're right, I'm on the wrong one.
Right, so, okay, no, the speakers were combining the two. So ours is not a, I mean, theirs is a majority for the boards.
Right.
Ours is not a majority, ours is essentially unanimous vote.
Correct.
Is that something that we had wanted? I just don't remember, I don't remember us agreeing to that particular aspect of it.
Or is it?
It's just, it's the first, well, we. Well, it's the second reading now. This is our second reading. Once we vote on it tonight.
It is four fifths for commission action.
Right.
Yes. I was on the wrong code. I scrolled to the wrong code.
You know, it's interesting, if you, once you, when you review the recommendations from the charter revision board, they even authorize the mayor to expel a member of the commission for unruly conduct. So watch it. Sweet mayor, my good friend Dean, which I thought was interesting. Anyway, so, nothing further? Do I, I don't have to close public hearings? So someone like to introduce the ordinance on second reading?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida enacting a new subsection 2 dash 29 of Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida thereby establishing a Code of Conduct for the city commission, providing for correction of scrivenor's errors, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR one is now approved on second reading. OSR two, this is a similar ordinance with regard to establishing a Code of Conduct for members of the city boards and committees. Chris and Robin, you both signed up. Is there anything additional you want to say with regard to committees and boards? Come on up. Chris and then Robin. You've got buy one, get one free at this point.
No, where there's one, there's the other. All right, so this one pertains to board members, presumably committee members?
Boards and committees, yeah.
Boards and committees.
Task forces, everything.
Okay. So I did read it and I see several red flags that appears to me as a means to keep those who would otherwise be civically engaged on a very short leash, abolishing any opposition this commission might otherwise face. This is not ready to be passed and frankly, I feel that if picked apart, it infringes on our First Amendment right. That's freedom of speech for those of you that don't follow the amendments. But, yeah, I'm totally against this one as written. But before I leave, I do want to get everyone's T-shirt size. I've got these really great, keep your greed out of our green, save, save Florida parks T-shirts. And Commissioner Glassman, I guess you're probably a large, so congratulations on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can, that, just give that one to Steve, I'll get, get you all, keep your greed out of our green T-shirts.
Thank you. Is this worth more than $5? Because I can't accept it if it is.
It's a donation. It was at zero cost.
Well, okay, we'll have to check that out. But thank you, I appreciate it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't frame you with a $20 T-shirt.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
You too, sir.
On this ordinance, I strongly disapprove and ask for it to be taken back to, for revisions. It's stepping into a major lawsuit regarding First Amendment rights, violation of freedom of speech, and in particular, my situation on the Affordable Housing Commission. So this is a rabbit trail and bear with me. On February 2nd, Commissioner Steve Glassman sent an official letter to the Affordable Housing Commission, which I was on, I have removed myself, regarding LeAnn Barber's personal letter to the editor that was regarding homelessness. She did not do this in a capacity with the Affordable Housing Commission. But we felt that we were threatened by the letter that we received. And at one point, Duane was sent to us, to one of our meetings, to let us know that we were outside of our scope of conduct, when in fact, we were responding to a letter that we received to warn us about LeAnn Barber's letter to the editor at Sun Sentinel that had to do with homelessness, not affordable housing, two completely separate issues. And it continued. It continued wasting enormous amounts of hours and energy from volunteers. We are not paid staff. And so we came up with a, what the only response we had was something called a communication to the commission. That was thwarted. That was thwarted. It was never sent and I was shocked. So we had to go through months of putting it back into the minutes, back to be refined. And I doubt that that communication was ever read to the public in, by this commission. And therefore, I'm going to read it right now.
Hold on a second, before you do that.
Yes.
I mean, every communication that is submitted and put on the agenda, we, we go through thoroughly. So I don't, I don't remember it being sent to us, but if it got to our agenda, you can be sure that we discussed it.
I'm not sure because I've asked.
Well, I can be, I assure you that if it was put on the agenda, we did discuss it. So if it wasn't discussed, it was because it wasn't sent to us as a communication.
Exactly. So we started this back in February, when we received the letter. So that's how long it's been. And this is what we voted on. We had to vote twice to get this pushed through. And we said, in response to the letter to us from Commissioner Steve Glassman, we feel his letter has breached into the area of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, not just of LeAnn Barber, but to all of us who received the letter, because he issued a threat to continue exploring options on how to proceed. It wasn't just a complaint forwarded to this committee. So this was continuous. It was not appropriate at all. And according to, I really, really need you to pull back on this ordinance and I want you all to read it. Because what it does is say that me, had I not resigned from this committee, I would be in violation and forcibly removed for putting this motion forward by saying Steve Glassman harassed us, intimidated us, and bullied us. And the other thing is, is both Steve and Duane, the deputy of city attorney, basically told us, we aren't allowed as so-called victims to say how we're being victimized. This is stifling speech. This is stifling criticism. This is not allowing any board member or committee member to actually say how they feel. You're not allowed to tell a victim how they're supposed to feel.
Well, we would never want to deny you the right to speak. That's never been the law of this city or of this state or this country. So if you have something to say, that's why we have these public forums. And we've heard your statement now, so does that conclude your remarks?
No, I don't think that you should.
Your three minutes, your three minutes are up.
Fine, but if you have anything to say, say it to my face.
I would love to say something to your face.
That'd be great.
Great, thank you. I take exception with everything you just said with all due respect. You tell half truths, you do that all the time.
You do it all the time.
Excuse me, I'm speaking now.
So are we violating our decorum right now?
Yes. So city attorney, city attorney, I have a question for you, a legal question. When a speaker fills out a card to speak at this meeting, when it says address, what is that street address supposed to be? A residence?
A residence, or yes, apartment or a street address.
Permanent address.
Not a P O box.
Permanent address, which is legal.
What does it say when it says street address?
It should have a street number and a street name.
Where you live?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A legal permanent address, just like the homeless who are all around me.
Again, one more time, city attorney, when a person fills out a card and says street address, what should that be?
A street number?
Permanent address.
A residence? Okay.
Permanent address.
What is, what is 1404 East?
It's the post office that I saved in downtown Fort Lauderdale. That's my legal permanent address, just like many homeless people.
City attorney?
You can't live in a P O box.
Correct. And neither can the homeless. And they use that P O box.
We're not talking about the homeless now.
Legal, excuse me, we just were. It is a legal address for many of us who have to move constantly. It is a permanent legal address. I love that he brought it up. Works out perfectly. Because my neighbors are not only Anna Marie Nicole, who has passed away in her estate, but also the homeless that live in the park. It's our permanent address so that we can vote legally.
Is this your voting address?
Yes, it is.
So you vote in Fort Lauderdale?
Yes, I do.
But you don't live at this address?
I do. No, no, no. I, I have to rent because I lost my home to water and mold damage. So as a renter, I have to move consistently because of rising rates. No, I do.
So are you, are you renting in Fort Lauderdale?
Right now?
Yeah.
I'm bouncing between leases. But that is my permanent address and it is a legal address. If you'd like to talk to the supervisor of elections, we will.
Just asking the question.
Just asking the question.
All right, let us conclude. All right, thank you. Tom, let's catch our breath for a second, calm down. Let's just go back. What is your take on, I mean, two people wondered about First Amendment issues regarding this ordinance. Is there, is there, I'd like your opinion on that.
This, this ordinance has been before you three times in different iterations to see what you had to say about different aspects of it. you had to say about different aspects of it. Again, comparable to the other ordinance about the code of conduct for the commission, it is cobbled together from about a dozen other cities' ordinances. None of the things that are in here, when somebody takes the time to read it, you don't have the legal right to use inappropriate language that are malicious, threatening, slanderous, disparaging, mean-spirited, vulgar, or abusive, among all the other things. That's what's in here. You don't have a First Amendment right to be nasty.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you can do that, but in this case, it's a code of conduct for people who are representing the boards and committees, and they cannot be to serve on those boards. So there's a number of things that you refrain from using: profanity, intimidation, disparaging remarks, ad hominem attacks toward other board members, city staff, you demonstrate dignity, respect, and courtesy. That's what it's about. It's pretty much a code of conduct of decorum for people serving on boards, committees, task forces. If you don't do it, you should, this gives the commission the right to take away your right to be on the board.
Okay, thanks.
In other words, we're not impeding on anyone's freedom of speech, because people have a right to say whatever they want.
That'll always be a question of the law ultimately, but in my estimation, when I wrote this and presented it to you, it does not do that.
And you put this together from looking at what other municipalities do?
A number of other cities, all over the state, different, small, big, and took the best of the best, brought it to you several times, if you may recall, over the months, before we finally brought it back. And this is the distillate of what we found, that would be what we recommended to you.
In other words, anyone can say what they want to say.
Yes.
It's just a choice that you might make, that if you want to be an advocate, and you want to be very critical, or criticized for whatever reason, then perhaps it's not best that you serve on a board that reports to the commission.
Correct.
In other words, choose one or the other.
This is a code of conduct.
Code of conduct.
That's what it's about.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tom, I'm not clear, because I just heard two different things. So what the vice mayor just said is you can't criticize anybody. What you said is you can't slander someone.
Right.
So please differentiate between the two. Criticism is, I assume, legal, and is not going to have somebody removed.
Criticism is legal. It doesn't say that anything, when you criticize, if it's malicious, it's threatening, it's slanderous, disparaging, mean-spirited, vulgar, or abusive, those are prohibited.
So let me get to two of those that are kind of interesting to me. So what's mean-spirited? How do we define mean-spirited in a way that...
I wouldn't know until I saw what the comment was tonight. Now, how do I make up a mean-spirited thing?
I don't think I can get out of bed without being mean-spirited, so I'm not sure. So I think I start today off...
Good thing you're not on one of these boards.
Is that before or after your first cup of coffee?
My first pot of coffee. I don't drink coffee by the cup. But no, it's a legitimate question. So, you know, when we're talking about mean-spirited, I can, there's a legal definition for slander. I can find that, I can look that up. I don't know that there's a legal definition for mean-spirited. If there is, you know, please, please share it with me.
I don't happen to have it right in my hand.
But he knows it when he sees it.
That's right. It's sort of like pornography.
Right, it's like pornography, right? Yeah, so, yeah, I know it when I see it. But, no, I guess I'm just, I'm concerned that we...
What it is is over the top.
Right.
You know, saying things that are over the top.
So like beauty, is it in the eye of the beholder?
Well, it's, when you read, again, lawyers will tell you, the mayor will tell you, when you read these things, a phrase called imperimateria. The other words, you look at the other words, how they affect this word. So if it's malicious, threatening, slanderous, disparaging, mean-spirited, fits into that context of those kinds of things. Or vulgar or abusive, that's what it would be.
Let's go to the other one that caught my attention, too. Malicious. So what would be considered malicious?
Well, that has a legal definition.
No, that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
Legal malice, that's true. But again, malice depends upon where it's used in an ordinance or a state law. This is something that means, again, in the context, that it's done to say something that is basically malevolent, to me.
It could be true and still be malevolent.
It could be true, but it...
It doesn't necessarily mean it's a falsehood.
Malicious, no. You can have a truth that's maliciously stated.
Okay. What I'm getting at here is, I just want to make sure that, you know, if we set out a set of standards, and I, you know, I think standards are important, I think we should all have standards of conduct and behavior. So I'm not opposed to standards. I just want to make sure that if we're creating standards, that they're objectively understood and uniformly applied. So that's the problem with pornography, as you brought up, is, you know, pornography in Fort Lauderdale is not the same as, you know, pornography in, you know, perhaps Clay County. You know, you go to Clay, Nassau, Baker, Bradford Counties, they tend to have a different view and are somewhat more conservative in their outlook than we might be down here in, say, South Florida. So there is no uniform standard of what constitutes pornography necessarily, right? So I just want to understand, if we've got volunteers up there, is it something that they can understand? Is it something that is, you know...
I just got a note from the gentleman who helped me, Eric, in my office, who helped me write this.
Thanks, yeah.
He wrote, "Malicious is the desire to harm others." That's pretty clear.
Okay, that's a good one. I think that's clear. Okay. I guess it's the mean-spirited one that might be a little bit more difficult for me.
I'll take a look at that to see if we have case law on it, just to make sure.
Okay.
Again, that wasn't something we dreamed up. We must have found it in five or six other...
I have no doubt. I know that you don't necessarily claim pride of authorship over these things, that, as you said, you know, best practices.
But ultimately, it's at my door, because I'm the one that recommends it to you.
Right, right. I just want to, I want to make sure, though, like I said, if we adopt something that it's clear and easily understood by everybody to whom it will apply down the road, so...
Well, John, can I just say this? I think we kind of know what the intent is here. And, you know, a person should be circumspect in even attempting to make disparaging or heavy-handed remarks towards somebody. What that dividing line is, who knows? It's whatever the commission at that point in time decides. But the point is that, the idea is to, is to have a chilling, I don't want to use that word, the idea is to discourage people from being mean to one another, and to evoke negative feelings, and feelings of fear, or feelings of embarrassment, or anything that takes away from the proper, the work of that particular committee. If the work of the committee is to do something, you know, engaging in these kinds of remarks takes away from that work. And I think that's the intent of this code of conduct.
And I fully support that, Mayor. I think the way you have characterized that is very appropriate. I just want to make sure we don't cross the line from, you know, again, having respectful conversations, but yet being able to criticize people, too. You know, one of the things about being an elected official, for better or worse, is we are subjected to an extraordinary amount of criticism, day in and day out. And so that's just part of what comes with the territory when we choose to stand up for public office. So I want to make sure that, you know, people feel that they can criticize us, and that criticism in and of itself is not necessarily malicious, or mean-spirited, or anything else. You know, we are, we expose ourselves to criticism, and I want to make sure we're not trying to quell criticism, because that's a legitimate function of government. We get better through criticism, I believe.
I don't see this doing that, and certainly not designed to do that. But don't forget, a majority of you would have to take a look at an allegation, take it in context of whatever was said in the minutes or the tape, and say, "Do, does a majority of us, three of us in this case, feel what that person said warrants being removed from the board?"
So we have one more, it's one more check and balance. Just because somebody says it's malicious, so to say, to use that particular word, then it comes back, they have one more shot at it, three of us have to agree with that before it goes ahead.
Right. And I have to say, and I have to say, John, that, you know, in all the years that I've been on this commission, with various mayors and commissioners, and in this commission even currently, despite our differences of opinions on many different topics, I have to respect all of you for maintaining the decorum, and respect for one another, and expressing our opinions, and achieving a final result, whatever measure comes before us. And I think that is the standard that others should follow in deliberations, not only at the board and committee levels, but throughout the city. So, you know, and it doesn't hurt us to do it, so it shouldn't hurt other people from doing it, too, in the boards and committees. Okay, there being nothing further said on this, there's no one else who's signed up to speak. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance? This is OSR 2.
Introduced.
In ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, enacting a new subsection 2-220 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, thereby establishing a code of conduct for members of city boards and committees, providing for correction of scrivengers, errors, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes, I'm voting yes. Understanding the intent of this particular ordinance, yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR 2 is now approved. OSR 3, this is an ordinance, a second reading, amending the city of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding to Holiday-Related Merchandise Outdoor Sales to Include New Year's Day. You mean Santa can't sit out on the front step?
Sell fireworks.
Fireworks.
Now let's have a parade.
And sell fireworks.
Fireworks.
Okay, no one signed up to speak? Would someone like to introduce the...
Introduced.
In ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, Section 47-18.15, entitled Holiday-Related Merchandise Outdoor Sales to Add New Year's Day to the List of Permissible Holidays for Outdoor Sales of Holiday Merchandise Providing for Severability Providing for Conflicts and Repeal Providing for Correction of Scriveners, Errors, and Providing for an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR 3 is now approved. Finally, OSR 4, this is a second reading, an ordinance amending the city of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding Parking and Load-Zoning Requirements, basically to revise the medical office parking requirement. Three people have signed up to speak. I assume it's just to respond to questions. Is Cassandra Crasney here? Do you want to speak, Crasney?
In favor? Good morning, oh, sorry, good evening.
Is it that late? Boy, time flies when you have such a good time, I tell you.
We're getting there.
My name is Cassandra Crasney, and I'm here today representing my husband and myself as residents of the Harbor Inlet District. My husband is currently on assignment at a hospital in Pennsylvania, so I'm speaking on our behalf regarding an ordinance change that is crucial for our small medical practice here in Fort Lauderdale. We are requesting a revision to the current parking ordinance, which mandates a minimum number of parking spaces that far exceeds what is necessary for a small boutique-style concierge medical office like ours. This has created an unnecessary barrier to securing our business license, despite the significant investments totaling several hundred thousand dollars made into our clinic, which is located in a developing neighborhood of Fort Lauderdale. Our practice will play an active role in enhancing the community, contributing to the growth and the vitality that aligns with the city's goals for development and improvement. By allowing us to operate, we believe we can further these initiatives. The current parking requirement was originally designed for larger, high-traffic medical centers, such as urgent care facilities, which we see numerous walk-in and require extensive parking. In contrast, our practice operates strictly by appointment, serving one to three patients at a time with one to two staff members, including myself and my husband. Additionally, we provide telemedicine services, further reducing the need for parking spaces. The available parking at our clinic is more than adequate to meet these needs, including accessible spaces for patients with disabilities. To clarify, we are not an urgent care center. We do not offer diagnostic services, nor do we have a pharmacy or provide after-hours care. Our patients are seen by appointment only, ensuring there is no unpredictable walk-in traffic or overflow. We urge the city council to consider how this ordinance might unintentionally burden small, professional medical practices like ours. By adjusting this requirement, the city can better support local businesses while still upholding the spirit of ordinance. We have previously raised this concern during the Harbor Inlet Bridge renovation with Mayor Trentalles, Director of Development Services Christopher Cooper, and Director of Transportation and Mobility Ben Rogers. As Fort Lauderdale natives with deep ties to this community, we are committed to supporting the city's growth. Moreover, we are not alone in this. Several other medical practices face similar challenges due to this ordinance. By addressing this issue, the city can help a range of small businesses across Fort Lauderdale thrive without compromising safety or community standards. This request aligns with the city's goals for responsible development and flexibility in zoning regulations. The adjustment we are seeking for is in harmony with the proposed amendments that support business growth while maintaining community standards. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Couple of quick questions, Bill. Where's your office located?
You know where Aloft is, by the beach?
Yeah.
Yeah, right next to that.
So obviously, you guys, when we spoke about it last time, I'm a physician, too, so, you know, differentiating a walk-in clinic or urgent care from an office, so urgent care takes all comers, so you have no idea, the waiting room could have one, two, 10, a ton of people. Your office is appointment-only, so typically, how many people would be in your waiting room at any given time?
Maybe three, max.
Okay, so the need for a bigger waiting room is not there for you, like in urgent care. So we discussed this last time. Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You list 888 East Las Solas Boulevard. I believe you do live there.
I could.
You could.
I have couches. Thank you, Mayor. I will be, commissioners, I'll be grief. So 888 East Las Solas Boulevard is an office building. The way the city parks professional office, and it calls all office professional, is one parking space for every 250 square feet, which is what this ordinance proposes to also park a doctor's office. So today, if I were a psychiatrist, I could not move in and be my next-door neighbor, because the office would be slightly underparked by a space or two. So one of the discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board by myself, by Bill Rotella, who tries to find people, places to have offices, consistent with what Cassie says, it's creating a barrier, and I think it's probably unintentional. I don't know that my office is any less or more busy than a psychiatrist's office. Again, differentiating between medical clinics. And when the city had looked originally at ITE, which is the national standard, they actually found medical office, not medical clinic, had a more, slightly more relaxed requirement than the 1250 even. It's cleaner to leave retail office, and I would suggest medical office at the same. That way, you could have our office buildings fully occupied.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shine, you want to speak?
Good evening, Commissioner. Andrew Shine, my address on there is 699 North Federal. I actually live at 808 Southwest 18th Court in District 4.
I don't know, I see that candle burning very late into the night.
Well, it does happen sometimes.
Okay.
Welcome back.
I am here speaking, it's important I said my address, because I'm here speaking really on behalf of myself here. I do have clients, past, present, and I'm sure future, who would be interested in this, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself and someone who's in the trenches and sees this issue frequently. Our neighboring cities, Oakland Park, their parking requirement for medical office is 1 to 300, Hollywood, 1 to 250, Dania, depending on the area, 1 to 200 or 1 to 250, and Pompano, depending on the specific use, between 1 to 200 and 1 to 500. We are losing medical office tenants to neighboring cities.
What is ours?
Ours is 1 to 150 right now. We are losing medical office tenants to our neighboring cities for, frankly, no good reason. It doesn't affect me as a lawyer. I represent clients in those cities. Doesn't affect my bottom line at all. But as a resident of Fort Lauderdale, I just don't see a reason that we should be losing these medical office tenants, good medical office tenants, just because of parking, so...
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Anyone from the commission have any further comments? If not...
Yes, as a physician, I will reiterate. I mean, you have diagnostics, you have labs, you sit there, and you come into the waiting room.
room, and you know, you're going to be waiting for, you know, you see the doctor, then you have to wait for the, the x-ray to be done, you're waiting for the labs to be drawn, and you know, another person's coming in, a third person's coming in, and you do have people filling the waiting room, you do need more car space. As a simply, I know you're just a plain physician office, your need for parking would be concerned, I mean, I agree with you, the need for parking is considerably less, so I do support this.
Okay, would you like to introduce the ordinance?
I'd like to, I, I would love to introduce.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Article 3 Development Requirements, Section 47-20.2, Parking and Loading Zone Requirements, and Article 11, Section 47-35 Definitions of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulations Relating to Parking Requirements for Medical Offices Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinance Provisions, Codification and Correction of Scrivener's Errors, and an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR 4 is now approved on second reading. Is there any further business of the commission? Mr., Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything you'd like to read into the record, any closed-door session?